Good evening, folks. Thank you for coming out tonight. I will call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Here.
Mr. Haverly?
Present.
Mr. Kinzer?
Here.
Mrs. Levine?
Here.
Mrs. Maxey?
Here.
Mr. Mohan?
Here.
Mr. Rudy?
Here.
Right. Would anybody like to make any changes to the agenda? And if not, could I have a motion and a second for the approval of the agenda?
I would like to move item 10B from unfinished business to item 11E.
All right. Tom would like to change board level committees. Item 10B to item 11E. Can I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Brian. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any other changes anybody would like to see tonight? All right. Hearing none. Roll call, please. Kelly.
Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Haverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to audience to visitors. We'll have quite a few tonight, folks. And I would like to remind everybody to keep your comments to five minutes or less. And we are, by policy, going to keep the audience-to-visitor section to 30 minutes. I'm not sure if we'll use up all that time, but I just wanted to let you know. Is Mr. Pentecost here tonight?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Pentecost. I have a letter from you. I wasn't able to talk to you before the meeting. Do you want me to read the letter, or would you like to present to the board?
Presented.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
It's right. All right. Thanks. I'll try to keep this as to when as possible. My voice tonight is likely just one voice admitting, but feedback from as many voices as possible to district leadership is critical to ensure success in the students and families you serve. I want to express the absolute need to support the reentry plan, in person attendance for District 200. Although I personally believe this plan is not aggressive enough, it is a step in the right direction. My focus tonight is the students and the life skills classes, and I will need to stick to that topic. Many of these points might be done, but it is something important and is worth mentioning over and over again. The HRT is a de-learning model for students with IEPs, or the IRLPs that we've been on board. Though what has been attempted to be forced on those students without proper guidance in the IRLPs simply isn't working. Various distractions from IT issues, disinterest in the virtual format, and loss of individual attention have all magnified the absent failure of this approach to the vulnerable population. I believe this is one of the main reasons that the ISPE made the recommendation to districts to accommodate this population in person learning. They knew it wouldn't work, in e-learning, but for whatever reason, leadership here thought it would. I think the most discouraging part of all of this is that modifications could have been instituted from the start to allow safe procedures for staff and students select. The guidance of the DARE, and other districts with much larger populations have figured out how to do it. But again, it appears, from what I stand, the fear and a standard of accepting failure is the guiding standard adopted by leadership of District 200. Had this approach been adopted, we would not be missing another additional month of relevant and productive education for individuals with specialized needs. A huge point that can't be missed in this discussion is that individuals in the life skills program, their education is more about discovering their individuality than it is to learn calculus. A child without the outlet for self-discovery is not a child at all. They're a robot. Any person, regardless of ability, needs that outlet. And whether you agree or not, school is a huge influence for that process. Again, I assume one of the reasons kindergarten is included in the phase one of the reentry plan supports that point. Virtual does not allow that discovery. It can't, and it won't, especially with kids who cannot detect or can never catch themselves from their home life and find their self by roving around the neighborhood of their friends. In-person, school is not optimal for these individuals. IEPs at the quarter, what they are, address that these students can't attain the same success thresholds as their peers. Why would any rational person, that is a possibility through, that, sorry, why would any rational person think this is a possibility through a computer? It is a time for the district to recognize the misstep and put in action corrective measures. If they are to do this, there's nothing short of direct failure on all the leadership, and more importantly, direct failure to the most vulnerable students you serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pentecost. Laura Pentecost, I believe you would like to present also. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Mine's a little bit different. I'm a little bit angry. I'm angry that this district chose to ignore the needs of your most at-risk students, that parents' input was not considered on what is best for them individually. My son personally has a new teacher, a new principal, and new environment. None of them know what is best for him. None of them. When this all started and it came out that we were going to go e-learning 100%, I had quite a difficult time reaching anybody to find an actual answer. I was initially told by his teacher, "Health department rules." It's not true. They didn't require you to cook. Then I was told it was the Board of Education. Come to find out, the Board of Education actually recommended that kids with IEPs should be in-person as much as possible. I then reached out to Peterson, Dutch, through a link, and was told that it was the board's decision. That's why I'm here tonight. So, just to begin, there are more people here on this panel than could be in my son's classroom. More, by far. There are three children in his classroom, from two homes, two are brothers, and my son. It's absurd. His original, as my husband said, his original plan cut his minutes by two-thirds and his education by half. By half. If my husband and I would not have challenged that, that amount of time would have been endorsed by your staff, but that's okay. It's not okay, under any circumstances. In the last two weeks, my son was scheduled 3,050 minutes of instruction time, fewer than what you guys have now, or getting. I timed it, in the two weeks. He actually got a total of 257 minutes. We are not short by 2,793 minutes. That is unacceptable, for anyone. Also, just a lot of discrepancies happening. I have watched, as day after day, for the last two weeks, not a single staff member on any video call has been wearing masks in that building. Now, what the Health Department does actually say is, quote, "All persons on school grounds, including students, teachers, school nurses, administrative and secretarial staff, food service personnel, custodial staff, public safety personnel, etc., must wear a face covering at all times when in school or in transit to and from school." There is one exception. When alone in a classroom or office with the door closed. It's not happening. I'm watching it day after day. All his age and his teacher are in one classroom because it's large. None of them are wearing masks. So if we're following guidelines, why aren't we following guidelines? As it relates to COVID and my son, I have spoken to his doctors. His main doctor is the Director of Electroentology at UW Children's Medicine Hospital, in our hospital in Hampton. I have a letter that I've been holding onto until after today, and I will be more than happy to give it to whoever needs it, as actually I have discussed. This is part of what that letter states. "In Parker's case, the situation is complicated by his not learning well in a virtual e-learning scenario. He is not particularly attracted to nor intended to electronic devices. Following CDC guidelines that he spelled out in the letter, it furthermore states that I, being the doctor, I believe these measures represent a residual guarantee between safety for Parker and providing essential educational opportunities and therapies for him. Finally, I urge that all possible accommodations for therapy and learning be made for Parker, especially at this time, as his most recent EEG shows no spikes at all, quite remarkable for someone with his condition. Making this an optimal time for him to learn and make developmental progress. Had you been consulting before this, just on an individual basis, I don't know, call from a teacher or principal, anybody for that matter, you would have known that." The only other thing I'd like to say is I'd like to make it clear that this e-learning approach meets the needs of almost all the staff and administration to be successful at their goals. It meets the needs of most of the typical population of students to meet their goals, and it meets the needs of very few of the students in a specialized education setting to achieve their goals. The belief that staff effort, effort, simply doing the best on the direct side of the equation to do e-learning to the best of your ability will not translate to success for a large portion of students with IEPs. And you need to accept that. This is not an inconvenience to our families, and it's not because of lack of trying to partner with the district through these challenging times. The reality is, it's impossible for our children. It is simply not how most special education students, ours for sure, is able to successfully learn and meet their goals in the education system. Lastly, it appears that the district is trying to achieve a certainty of no one getting COVID-19. The truth is, there is no certainty, and we all live our lives and take measured risks to continue to be able to grow and live. Our education system should be no exception, especially when that decision mortgages the future of a population you serve in an attempt to achieve a certainty that does not exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pentecost. Ms. Johnson. Stephanie. Evening, Stephanie. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for taking the time to hear what I have to say regarding the plan to phase our students back into school. To start, I have two children in this district, and they have had a wonderful education experience. So far, highly dedicated, that's what we understand. I wish I could say the same what happened to them right now. They're losing interest in school. My son, who's a sophomore, has expressed the lessons he is getting are so hard he is learning. In fact, right now, he's calling his education a joke. He understands, as do I, what the teachers are up against in this challenging time, but he also expects more, and he has that right. My daughter, who is in seventh grade, she's actually here tonight, we'll speak later, is getting migraines and blurred vision from being behind a computer screen far too long, especially when I compare it to the screen time my son is getting. He is often released from Google Meet within 10 minutes, where she is off to 8:15, has a 30-minute lunch break, and then she's right back on for another two plus hours. I have reached out and asked for recommendations from the district administration regarding how to help her navigate through an extensive screen time while continuing to be successful in the classroom. The response? Just purchase her a pair of blue light computer glasses. Is that at my expense? Will the district provide them? Are they going to reimburse me for that? Her health issues are directly related to the school environment she was forced into, one chosen by administration and this board. I didn't choose this. She didn't choose this. Our choice was ripped away from us at the last board meeting, completely disregarding the fact that the majority of the population wanted their children at school, not stuck behind a computer screen. We are constantly being presented with data, statistics, that you were following, but you choose to follow the data that meets your agenda. What about the data you've collected from the community? What happened to 67% of the families wanting their children returned to school? Why is that ignored? The benefits of our students being back in class far outweigh the small percentage of risk being involved regarding this virus. Let us make that choice for our children, just like we choose to put them behind a wheel of a car, where there is potential to get seriously hurt and death. Just like we choose to put them in contact sports, also potential for injury, sometimes death. Give us power of voices back. I also express my concerns about the original timeline of getting these kids back to school. And come to find out, my sophomore will be going back to school much later than the original date presented at the previous board meetings. Why is that? Why is edification less important than anybody else? I absolutely agree that the students with IEPs, life skills, religious training, they should be considered first, but the length in between each phase is ridiculous. The plan also indicates students will be in school for half-days. What does a half-day look like? Why a half-day? COVID only exists in the afternoon? As a parent, I'm assuming it would be age 1130, based on previous half-days. I hope it's not just approached to teach the basics and send the kids home before lunch, despite they have no PE, no art, no music, et cetera. Lunch can absolutely be served safely, especially if you utilize cafeteria and gym spaces in the building. Consider having hot lunch students, maybe they're in cafeteria. Cold lunch students, they go to the gym, especially if they're not going to have that. This will allow for easier social distancing. There's always solutions, as long as you are willing to consider them, and not take the "what's going to be easier" approach. It's time to stand up and take the "what will be best for these students" approach. I'm a teacher. I work in a different district. We've been in-person full-time since August 24th. My building just hit its first positive case yesterday. The middle school just had its first base last week. The high school, two cases and three bases apart. We're a much smaller district. We have fewer buildings to spread our kids out. We have fewer faculty and staff. We have fewer resources, and we are making it work. There's going to be positive cases, whether in-person or not. A smaller district in McHenry County, a friend of mine is the principal. Their full remote, they have 12 positive cases. It's high time this district focused on the community it serves, and remember the commitment this board makes to the community. You serve us, we don't serve you, thank you. Our children deserve more than what this plan offers. I also write concerns from faculty and staff that don't feel safe returning. I respect that, absolutely. But what everyone needs to remember is we're all in the same position. You guys have got us as parents to make a choice to give our families or our careers in many cases. There are many parents who aren't able to work from home. We've had to find alternative learning environments for our kids. You might have to ask for faculty and staff to do the same thing. Consider by organizing who has the choice to be a remote teacher or who's in-person, first based on maybe underlying health conditions or age, seniority, and finally, personal challenges such as childcare. I myself have compromised in this. I have cancer. I go every day. I've been very successful in-person with my students. What's even more disheartening as a parent? A member of this board withdrew his student from the district to homeschool. Still going through home learning. Why? Does he not believe in their health learning plan? What kind of message does that send to the community? Not a very positive one. Families in this community are already looking elsewhere so their children can get the education they deserve, which isn't the look for for North Boone. I challenge you to step up and make a plan that is not to hold all of your students' status. Consider the whole child, as I cut my letter. Students are at risk for depression, anxiety, abuse, and suicide. Social and emotional learning is more important now, and they aren't getting anything from not being at a computer screen. This phase in the plan considers the needs of our children, and the parents of this community expect better and improve that.
You, Ms. Johnson? Olivia Johnson. Thank you for coming out tonight, Olivia.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Johnson. I'm a southern parent in North Boone. I just wanted to share what it is like learning from home instead of being at school, where I belong. I can't build relationships with my teachers on a computer. I can't build relationships with my friends on the computer. The lot of my classmates don't have their hair in zone, so I don't even know what they work on. I know the teachers are trying their best, but learning on computers is nowhere near the same thing in person. I miss being up every day going to school, listening to students run class. I miss the discussions we even have when learning's about these things. I miss being around people. These things, when that would be the same place behind computers. You miss me? Plus, I've been in softball all summer and it's been safer and healthier. What am I getting from home? What I am getting from home learning are migraines and learning almost daily. I never had this problem before, and now I do. How is that fair? Why should I be a pain before we learn everything? Sometimes I feel like I need to throw up because my energy is so bad. When will be our choice to come back to school? Why is it up to people I've never seen inside our school buildings? When do students get to vote? What would happen if we all refused the law on every move? Why are we forced to learn in a way that is not best for most of us? I was excited when my mom told me earlier this summer that we had the choice to go back for, to go back to school rather than at home. I couldn't wait to get back to school until my teachers and teammates turned to my new school. I remember my mom coming home crying, angry at that to me, when she pretty much said that our voices didn't matter to the board or the administration. That said, we should matter. I should matter. My brother should matter. Every student in this district should matter. Did you know that if it passed this new plan, we have at least eight months since I've been at school? Did you know that I've been at least 10 months before my brother gets to go back? That's dumb. That's wrong. They said, "Let's go back to school." I've never been embarrassed to say I want to go through, but not now. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. Chris Danner. Thank you for coming out tonight, Mr. Danner.
Thank you for having me. My name is Chris Danner, and I have two boys for high school. I've been also an educator like Stephanie for 23 years, but I'm not here to talk about school. I mean, I'm lucky that we've been said and covered, and I think Stephanie did a great job of covering that story, Olivia. I'm here to talk about athletics and extracurricular activities. First, going to read an email that I sent to Jake and Mr. Sullivan a couple weeks ago, and then I have just two quick ones after that. Mr. Here, I was wondering when North Boone High School would start allowing their contact days. I was wondering if they were going to start the contact days on September 7. I bring this up not because of how well of our student athletes compete in upcoming seasons, but for the social and emotional well-being of my two children. Sports to them has been more than just about winning and losing. They have our discipline, our work, teamwork, just to name a few things. Without sports, a void has now been in their lives for many months, and unfortunately, I'm seeing them struggle with this as well as many other kids and their close circle friends. Please, for the well-being of my children and for all the athletes in North Boone, allow them to give back what they love and what gives them the social, emotional support that they need. If the ISSA is allowing these contact days, and other schools are allowing these contact days, we then should also. Stephanie mentioned choices. I understand that you guys have been in a really, really bad spot, making huge choices for communities, and I do not envy you, being your positions at the superintendent, school board, super dug. But right now, we don't have a choice. Parents of athletes and athletes in North Boone, as far as contact days go, we don't have a choice. And all I'm asking right now is for you to let us make that choice, to open us up to contact days. And if there's a parent out there that does not want to send their kid, they don't have to. But if there's parents that do want to send their kids, then let them. But please, let us make that choice, what is best for our kids. The second thing, what I can tell you is, I don't have the time and energy to research every district in our surrounding area of whether they're doing the contact days or not, but I'm pretty sure they all are. And what I can tell you for sure, that Public District 158, my district, the high school, 3,000 kids is doing contact days, and they have them since September 7. And they have had zero cases of anything. They do all the proper precautions, the screenings and everything. Softball, baseball, football, basketball, boys, girls. They got field houses, and they've got hundreds of kids, zero. You're right. Please, let us make a choice.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. Katie Wilderborn. Wendelborn. Thank you for coming out tonight, ma'am.
All right. First, I want to address our president and our mind, that us parents over here, we want our choice back. We got that choice to rescue late from us. That is why we're here today. And we don't need any more harsh criticism, any more "I'm right, but you're wrong." We just want what's best for our kids. I've also had a comment used to me that if I needed to socialize my child, maybe I should have had another one. I can't. That's a harsh comment, so. So I need all school boards to know that I want my child back to school for something I cannot give him, so. I also want to throw up with addressing the school board, how my son is doing with e-learning. As a blessing to these parents, I have compared myself extremely lucky. I get to see for a season in a decent job. I can't believe I'm getting one, getting out of her. But these are the emotional life of school, so I'm like that. I'm trying hard to find out, but. He calls school fake. Fake school. I have fake friends. I know what he means by fake, because when he was in preschool in April, and we were FaceTiming his friends and doing Zoom for preschool, something went off on him just like that. All of a sudden, crying, couldn't get his back. And he said, "I don't want fake friends anymore, Mom. I want my real friends then. I want to go back to preschool." I had a depressed kid in April. I don't need a depressed kid in November, and December, and October. And he got reached out to school to try to find a social worker, help me with something for him. And all I got was more virtual meetings with kids. He doesn't need another virtual meeting. He needs a kid sitting next to him. He needs, he's not in this alone. He goes up the screen, or real kids, and have a YouTube video. Just yesterday, he was trying to practice his numbers, and he started crying because he couldn't do it. So he threw the whiteboard across his screen. This is not the behavior I've seen in my childhood before. He's a good kid. He doesn't act up like that. What I believe he needs is that parallel learning, where he can look over and see that maybe this kid isn't doing it as great either, like he is. Maybe this one's struggling even worse. He needs to know that he's not alone in learning these new concepts. His teacher did a great job when she saw this happening. She tried to console him, but he needs that in-person, not through a computer. And all he can see is her making her work at five, and he's not doing it. Which, by the way, is a good vibe today. I understand you guys, Laura, look at this task, this huge task to plan to bring these kids back. I myself plan commercials to their parks or airlines, and I'm going to ask to look into 2021 and 2022 a revolting agreement. Plus, man, I need to crystal ball too, just as much as you guys do. I have no idea what's going to happen in two years. I've also had the opportunity to plan a large event for my company too called Introduce Girl Engineering. It was an event where I had to bring 50 private and public school black girl girls into the building and teach them what it means to be an engineer. This meant I had to work on getting admission slips for the girls, photo release forms for the girls. I had to make sure all the chaperones were U.S. citizens. I had to walk the route that they'd be facing. They'd be walking with an international trade client officer, had a security. I had to work out where the TV stations were going to be placed, to see if they would see anything. If they were to report into our school directory. I also had to make sure whoever was walking along, including myself, had received the right training. I understand what it means to plan a large task, which was very daunting to me. And I thought that they were not great. We were starting to go great. And then the girls fell on the shop floor and hit their head. But you know what the best part about that part was? I didn't plan that happening, and it worked out just by audio planning. I bring this up because we can't plan every little thing. We can't make sure we micromanage everything. Her parents were called, and our inside, onsite nurses were called, and ambulance was called, the school was called, all four. I was even told that this happened. It was fantastic. And I wish that the school board would look at it, so they don't have to plan everything perfectly to bring these kids back. You just have to know that you have the right staff in place, that if something bad else happened, that what happened to you in my event, that we'll figure it out, Sarah. We'll make it work. We'll make sure that all the kids are safe. And lastly, I want to bring up, is that I heard on a meeting, well, how do we expect kids to socially distance or listen, especially the younger ones? My husband and I call it "teacher magic." I'm very sure a lot of parents are worthless doing. See this with their kids? They're like a whole other kid in front of their teachers or with grandparents. It's amazing. I got a witness, my son, in preschool, walking down the hallway from library. 15-year-olds in a line, not talking. And they came into the room with all the parents there, we need to do a Christmas party, cupcakes on the tables, sat down, and were writing story time. That's magic, okay? I feel like teachers will have that, still have that magic, even now, even with social distancing. Because kids just want to come in, they just want to learn. That's all that they want. They want to be with their friends. They want to make new friends. And if we tell them, "You have to sit here, and you have to sit here," they're going to do it because they want to. They don't know what, and that's not normal. And as the kids haven't worn masks all day, my son's doing it really just fine. He kind of asks, "Mom, can I wear my dinosaur mask today when I go to the store with you?" "Sure, buddy. Put it on, it's well." And then, we're just adapting to it, like he just so quickly is okay with this, more than probably any of us are. It's a piece of cake for him now. He doesn't think twice about it. So I hope these are not anything that we can be frightened of anymore, and bring the kids back. So at the end, I just want to say, as a parent, I wish that we could plan with us that we can, but know that we have trusting adults in the right places, and to let the teachers work their magic academically and socially.
Thank you. And we've got one last speaker tonight, Laura Sarczuk. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Thank you for coming out tonight, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for the long and soft speak here tonight for the board. First of all, I do want to thank the teachers. We have Mrs. Ford. She's a special ed teacher. She's a fantastic teacher. She's been very grateful and fortunate. We're also in a little bit different position. I have a mom living with us, so she's been able to do this. My husband and I continue to get our jobs, which we can back to all the model. My daughter is a life skills student, and we also fortunate that we have a, one of her friends home with us because her parents also work, and we took on that responsibility to have her with us in the class. We have set up like a classroom. I do agree with being on remote learning. It is difficult for all these children. And I think we also understand the school's position. I also work with a government agency, and we are dealing with it in our per part district. But I have a hard time understanding, we have remote learning in our building. We have 60 kids in our building, and we're working through it. We have no cases, and then I don't know why the school district can't do anything. Because we've made it work for us as well. So I see that it's important for these kids to come back, all of them. I think that, I think we all have to get around that COVID is not gonna, if it's gonna happen, it's going to happen. It's going to be in every single building. No matter how we address it, how do we contain it, how do we handle the situation? I think it's very important for kids that have social skills, they don't understand. My daughter just found the germs at 3:20 in the hallway. She wasn't seen in school. This is her freshman freshman, so to come up through the school district and not see their teacher in person, not to be in this building, not to understand this. And again, we're very fortunate because she does have a friend with her. We've worked through that. But all the other parents with IP, it's very difficult for all of us. I mean, we all talk about it. We all work through it. But at the end of the day, every single parent should be able to make that decision. And I understand that we have a proposition for the board, but I think we should leave it to the parents to make the decision. Our children should not return and work through this with all of us. Again, I do appreciate everybody's time, and I know how hard it is to see these because I do it as my daughter and my mother. It's difficult, but at the end of the day, it's difficult for us parents that have to work through our kids. None of us are teachers, and I don't know anybody who are fortunate enough to be able to teach their children. I'm sure it's hard to teach your own child and to work through all this and to get through this and understand all of it. So thank you again for your time, and I know you have to consider all of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. That puts us at exactly a half an hour, so I'm going to end the audience to visitors now. I do still have a number of letters that were sent to me, but we're going to stick with the half hour rule. And we appreciate everybody's input tonight. That brings us to the public hearing on the 2020-2021 budget, item number five. Anything to present on that?
That allows the audience to address the board.
Which brings us to the treasurer's report, hearing.
I believe it's as presented, if I'm correct on that, Melissa?
Yes, it's as presented.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions on the treasurer's report? Superintendent's report.
Yes, got five items here. We got school off to a fairly successful start. As with any year, there's always some things that could be smoother. The one thing that has required.
Better give me a moment. I forgot to make the statement. Folks, this is a meeting in public. This isn't a public meeting, and I, a number of comments tonight were rather poignant, and we appreciate everything you had to say. But I hope you'll allow us to get our business done tonight without any interjecting comments, especially harsh and critical ones. We greatly appreciate that. I assure you, we're doing our best, and we'd appreciate your understanding. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. As of any other year, there's always things that could be smoother. The one thing that we have has required some extra attention and time this year. It's been resolving some of the freezing issues and connectivity issues that we've been having with some of our streaming. Things have improved better this week. We've got a little farther to go with it. It's had to do with our bandwidth and meeting our demands of the megabits per second, which we were at 300. We're growing it again as of today to another 500. And so that hopefully should help some of the freezing, the connectivity, and some of the issues that we've been having with computers spinning and not connecting. So I want to thank all of our administrators and our staff for getting us off to a smooth start in a really, really unconventional school year. Once again, we're doing lunches for all of our students. We're asking parents to submit their orders for it. And right now, we're currently averaging about 250 a day, which can be grown. And we are using transportation to help get those lunches delivered to students. ISB is awarding more money to school districts in an effort to close the digital divide. It's an $80 million fund that will be distributed among schools. And North Boone will receive about $120,000 that can go towards infrastructure, devices, and any other technology that's needed to help with the e-learning divide. Our district was also awarded $20,000 extra for our pre-K program. Was it 20, Nicole? Lower? Eight? Lower? Southern eight? Boy, that shrunk since last week. That was quick. Okay, so we're about $8,000 to our pre-K program that can be used towards educational items that will help assist in pre-K. And the last thing that I wanted to make mention, we are going to talk a little later about the bike path that the county highway department's looking for support with. Boone County Park District is also investigating and planning the possible building of a swimming complex for the county, and this project moves forward and will hope, and hopefully this project will move forward, and we will hear more from Mark Pentecost in the Boone County Park District. And they may be requesting some support for us too, as they try to get that up off the ground. So that is all I have.
Any questions for Mike? Hearing none. That brings us to committee reports. Mary, do you have anything for policy committee? You aren't on, I don't believe.
Am I on now?
You are.
We have not met, and I don't believe we have any plans to meet right now. We don't have any policies. Mike?
Mike, is she correct in that? I think she's looking for your acknowledgement.
Oh, yes, you're correct.
We don't have any new policies to.
I believe we do, but I'll get with a date with you.
Thank you, folks. Tom, Business Services Committee.
We have not met, and we do not have a meeting planned.
Thank you, Tom.
Ed, how about facilities and long-range planning?
So we did meet, we did meet the other night. We discussed a range of topics. We got an update on how some of the projects are going. We did have some conversations about potentially starting some other projects, potentially get us to a different place or return to school down the road. Jim and Dean will be examining several of those projects and then they get back to us if that, right, Mike?
Yes.
In some potential processes. We got an update on some of the challenges from the technology folks and where they thought the neighborhood was big. Essentially to make sure that we had done what we needed to to try and fix some of the issues that we had to put back with the e-learning. And it looks like some of that has transpired in the weeks since we met. So that's all we have for now. We'll be meeting again shortly, but that's all we have scheduled for now.
All right, thank you. Ed, and CIA?
We did meet September the 9th, so the day after school started. Our main topics revolved around two items that we had tabled from our previous meeting, discussing the assessment of student learning, especially with kids remote. And we were trying to have conversations around how we were working with our tools to best assess that. And I will actually let Carrie, if you don't mind, give you a little summary about our curriculum goals for the next year.
So I also presented to the CIA committee our curriculum goals for this year and how we're going to try to meet those, or brainstormed with them, how we're going to try to meet those in our unique circumstances. So we have some, some content areas that are, our goal is to implement some priority standard assessments this year. And so we're still trying to work out what that might look like in a remote setting. And then we also are looking to start a new curriculum committee for K through 4 literacy this year to begin that review process. And then continue the process with our 5-8 literacy resource adoption, which is being piloted right now. And then also just continue some of the process with 9 through 12 social studies and English language arts. I might just give them an overview of that.
That's great. And then finally, we did, as we had last year, we decided to set quarterly meetings ahead so that we had some set dates on our calendar for pulling curriculum together. So our next meeting right now, tentatively, I go with maybe officially, I guess it's the 4th. We have a meeting in January, March, and May as well, folks.
Thank you, Carl. Any questions for anybody about committee reports? That would explain, for those of you who, like me, didn't really understand why we were getting CIA meeting announcements that are way off in the future. That was their planning ahead. Good job, Carl. Sorry to catch that. That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion and a second, please, to approve the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the special meeting of August 4th, the special meeting of August 11th, the special, the regular meeting of August 18th, personnel, Drive Right Contract, Contract 2020-2022, and the contract with Notes 88 Music Therapy Services.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Motion by Maxie, and a second by Mulholland. Are you okay with that, Ed? I think you both motioned at the same time. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Kelly.
Mr. Haverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Motion passes. That brings us to unfinished business, the approval of the 2020-2021 budget.
Yes, it is attached to your packet, and Melissa upped the fire prevention and safety. And Melissa, do you want to describe what you upped for that?
Yes, we, I upped the expenditures in the fire prevention and safety fund. For some of our projects that we needed to do, we had to get state approval to use those funds, and we did get that approval. So I acknowledge that in our budget, up to about, from $35,000 to $65,000. But that's the only change that I've made since the last time we met.
So we'll be looking for the board to approve that tonight.
Any questions?
How much total contingency do you have in for COVID-related changes like dividers and things like that?
So we probably have around 600,000, 650,000 in the budget for COVID contingencies, just for supplies. We did put in some extra for staffing too, but we do have that money set aside. So if we're remote or in person, we have some flexibility there to meet the needs of the students and the staff at the school.
So the 600,000 is not committed yet? It's a true contingency, or portions of that are committed?
Yes. Well, about 500,000 is set aside just for potentially dividers. That was about the quote that we had gotten. About 100,000 of that is divided in between the schools. So some of the schools have bought PPE and other COVID-related expenses, but most of that is still just kind of there for whatever needs may arise here in the next couple of months, so.
Thank you. Any other questions for Melissa? If there are none, can I have a motion and a second to approve the budget for the 2020-2021 school year?
Make a motion to present, to approve the 2020-21 budget as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Maxie.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, was that Brian?
It wasn't.
That was Mr. Kinzer. I'm sorry. Mr. Kinzer, thank you. We have a motion by Maxie and a second by Mr. Kinzer. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Haverly?
Yes. Motion passes. That brings us to, we are skipping item B and to C, the technology plan and emotional learning, C and D. There is nothing new to add at this time. But I did ask Mike and Kelly to please keep this on the agenda so that we will be revisiting both of those items at every one of our board meetings to keep us on task and to get any updates that are related to those two things, items C and D. Were there any questions about either of those? If not, we can move on to new business. All right, that will bring us to new business. The May bills. And September bills. We start with item A, the May 2020 bills. Carl, I believe that was your purview this time?
Good review and had no questions.
Okay.
We approve this as presented.
All right, Mr. Rudy is making a motion to approve as presented the May 2020 bills. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
That was Brian, yes?
Yes.
Hazelhurst, thank you, sir. Any questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Kelly.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Haverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Motion passes. September 2020 bills. Can I have a motion and a second, please, for the approval of the 2020 bills? September 2020 bills.
I will move, we approve the September 2020 bills as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy. We have a motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
That was Mr. Hazelhurst again. I'm sorry. I have to start looking at faces. A motion by Rudy and a second by Hazelhurst. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Kelly.
Mrs. Maxie?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Haverly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Levine?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, folks. That brings us to the modified reentry plan.
Yes, in your packet tonight, we put a reentry plan. We are asking the board to approve a reentry plan that has four phases to bring students back. Carrie will present the plan, and we'll open it up for questions, discussions, and input at the end. The intent of the plan is to bring back students in a systematic method with detailed structure that organ, minimizes the risk to students at each building, and also prioritizes those students that really need the in-person instruction that needed the most. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie, and she'll walk us through this plan.
Thank you, Dr. Greenlee. So tonight, I am presenting to you our in-person phase-in plan for this school year. As you can see here, our goal of this plan is to make sure that we increase in-person learning for our students across the district based upon our student needs while following the guidance and metrics from IDPH. Many districts in our area already have groups of students back in some capacity, or they are currently working on a plan to bring students back in October. So you will see that our plan follows a similar progression in terms of getting students back in person. Just a little bit of background. Kelly, if you could go back. As everyone knows, we have opened with, with remote learning for all of our students, and we've been in remote learning since September 8th. Our teachers have provided synchronous and asynchronous instruction to all of our students during this time. So our next step is to bring back those targeted groups of students using a hybrid model. And so what we're presenting tonight is different than our original plan, our original return to in-person learning plan. We have now created phases that will bring kids back in a way to teach them the new structures of going to school in COVID time while also minimizing our health risks. And we have used guidelines from the Illinois State Board of Education and from IDPH to guide the plan. We'll talk about those metrics in a moment. We've also reviewed input from multiple stakeholders. We have reviewed our parent surveys again that we're giving over the summer. Just a reminder, in our first survey, about 70% of our parents indicated that they would want their students in person, and in our second survey, 65%. During our planning process over the last couple of weeks, we have met with all of our administrators, we have met with all of our union reps from each building, and we have, and principals have met with teacher groups at the building level in order to get their input and to get feedback on our plan. And we have made some changes to that plan based on their input and feedback. The next slide talks about our estimated dates. Our target date of starting our in-person plan is October 5th if we meet our metrics. If we are unable to start on any target date, we will start on the first day of the week following once we have met metrics. And we will not move to a new phase if we are not meeting metrics. And so I think that that is really important, that as we talk about these phase-in. And so I think that that is really important, that as we talk about these phase-in plans, as we talk about the dates, and if you go to the next slide, Kelly, you'll see our timeline here, these dates are very fluid and tentative. We will begin phases as we meet the health metrics. So in an ideal world, if we meet our health metrics, we'll begin Phase 1 on October 5th, Phase 2 on October 26th, Phase 3 on November 16th, and Phase 4 on January 19th. But this all could change based on health metrics and whether we would have to push some of those phases back if we're not meeting the metrics, or if the metrics are not where they need to be to open or bring more students back safely. The metrics that we're using come directly from IDPH. In order, IDPH says that a county is in warning level if they have not met two or more of these metrics. Currently, Boone County is not in warning level because we meet all of these metrics except for one. It will be Dr. Greenlee's charge to monitor these metrics on a weekly basis to make sure that as we're moving forward, we are not in a warning level. The Boone County Health Department is also working with other health departments in the area to provide additional guidance to schools to return to in-person learning. And so we are partnering with the Boone County Health Department as well. So I'd like to walk you through our phases. So Phase 1, which again, the tentative start date for Phase 1 would be October 5th, brings back really four or three groups of students. The first is our special education life skills students, the second is our pre-K students, and the third is our kindergarten students. You'll see in this schedule here, we have some variation of which days those students would come into the building, and these are in line with certain schedules that the buildings are currently using. One of the things that is new here is that you can see kindergarten, we are only looking to bring them back four days a week for a half-day. That half, the Monday would be asynchronous activities on that day and also allow teachers to pull in students for small group work, or do small group virtually, or assessment work with students on more of an individual basis on Mondays. But all students would attend Tuesday through Friday for those half-days. I'll explain that in a little bit more detail in a moment. Kelly, if you could go to the next slide. Preschool is unique. We have preschool in our district that has a morning session and an afternoon session. And so we would be alternating which week those students are in-person and which week they are remote. So for example, in Week 1, our AM students would be in-person, and our PM students would have remote pre-K, and in Week 2, AM would have remote pre-K and PM would have in-person, and it would just keep alternating back and forth by the weeks. For kindergarten and then all of our other first through fourth grade phase-ins, we would run a Tuesday through Friday in-person schedule with Mondays being for teachers to run small groups virtually or to bring them in for small group instruction, and all students would have asynchronous activities that they could be doing that day as well. Tuesday through Friday would be broken up into AM and PM chunks. All of our in-person students, students who select in-person instruction, would attend in the morning. Our AM session would run from 8:00 AM until 10:30 AM. So they would have two and a half hours of time with their teacher in-person. During that time, their full-remote students would have virtual PE, music, art, and library, as well as independent and flex time in the morning. Then in the afternoon, our K teachers, and then as we move forward, our first through fourth grade teachers, will teach from 12:15 to 2:45 their full-remote students. These are students who are choosing not to return to school in-person. And our students that were in-person in the morning would go home, and they would have synchronous PE, music, art, and library in the afternoon, as well as some flex and independent work time. This schedule allows us to provide two and a half hours of synchronous instruction to our students at all grade levels, K through 4, either in-person or virtually, and then also allows us to provide virtual instruction for all of our specials. And so our students were not having to cut that from our students. Now I'd like to talk about Phase 2. So in Phase 2, we highlighted here what is new. So in Phase 2, we could still have everyone who's in-person for Phase 1. Then we begin to introduce our fifth through 12th grade IEP students on an AB schedule. They would alternate days, Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday. Wednesdays would be used for remote planning and remote support for all of our students, including students who are full-remote. At the K4 level, we have brought, we are also adding first and second grade to that half-day schedule, Tuesday through Friday. And on Mondays, we're providing time, additional time for our third and fourth grade IEP students that they could, for appointments, where students could come in, provide one-on-one instruction or small groups on Mondays. We'll move to Phase 3. In Phase 3 is where we bring back third and fourth grade half-days following that same schedule that K2 is following. We also bring back fifth through eighth grade students on an AB alternating schedule for full days. And then we bring back ninth through 12th grade ELL and at-risk students. At-risk students are, is something that is on our state report card and that we monitor very closely at the high school level, and so we would be using that data to make sure we bring in those students who need additional support. And Phase 3, again, as a reminder, would begin November 16th if we keep with our timelines. The last phase is Phase 4. The new addition in Phase 4 is all of our ninth through 12th grade students are back on an AB schedule, so following that similar schedule of 5 through 8. This would be, begin on January 19th, which is the start of the second semester. The reason we are waiting for second semester is because once we get into December, then we have Christmas break, then we come back from Christmas break, and we only have a couple of weeks before that second semester begins. And so that is when we would bring ninth through 12th grade students back full-time. We also know that we will probably have multiple schedule changes to make once students return at the high school level, because we will have, based on our students that choose to go full-remote, and because high schools run on credits, those schedules need to, those schedule changes need to be made at the semester, not in the middle of it. And so that is why we are recommending that we bring all of our ninth through 12th grade in-person students back at the semester. The next slide shows student numbers in each building for each phase. So this would be the maximum amount of students that would be in each building, Phase 1 through Phase 4. These numbers could be lower once we find out how many students will remain full-remote. But this would be as if every student comes back, the numbers that we would have in each So I thank you all for letting me present to you tonight, and we are, Mike and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? Where to begin, yes? Somebody who would like to step forward and begin?
I guess I have, I would agree with Joe's statement. I'm going to have a lot of questions on this.
I assume there will be many.
One of the questions I have, and I have forwarded an email to Dr. Greenlee from the CDC, is they came out with some guidelines on the 15th or 16th of September and changed greatly the metrics, in my view, that they're looking at like, I would guess, a subset of the total guidelines that you look at for hospital admissions. And I'm wondering why, and even on the, Mr. Rudy sent out another email that even Boone County or the state of Illinois has a subset of school metrics that they give. And so I'm wondering why we, as you're focusing on guidelines to follow, why we're not looking at the ones that are focused on schools instead of looking and then saying, per CDC guidelines, do you want to be in green, or what should these five phases are we trying to target? Would it seem to be a more clear-cut way of, these are the goals I'm trying to hit, these are where we're comfortable as an administrative team in going, and these are what we're going to pull off the Boone County website to either say yes or no, or let's pause? What's the...
So you, yeah, you shared those with us last week, and up until that point, all we had from, guidelines from both, that we had to work from was, came straight from ISB and IDPH. I talked with Amanda Mel last week from the Health Department, and she said that they were also working on some better indicators for schools to be able to use to make those types of decisions. And then, on that same point, you gave me the CDC thing. So we're open to look at the CDC thing as well as whatever Amanda comes back with, because really, the first, the only goals we, or the only metrics that we've had is what has been stated that's come out of IDPH.
So I guess what I would be looking for as a recommendation from the administration team would be if, which is hard when it's not up there to talk about or to look at, but I would want to specifically look at, what are you comfortable, what target range do you want to hit on those goals? And this is the data that we're going to be looking at, so.
You're talking about the risk, right? The risk level? Yeah.
Carrie or Mike, can you tell me a little bit about what the rationale behind spreading these phases out in, at grade levels so discreetly, or why we have such a, why we're introducing, if I'm tracking this correctly, Phase 3 is when we're bringing back our middle school, our upper elementary. Phase 4 would be when we're bringing back high school. But we're starting with AB days back in at least some of the levels as far back as Phase 2. So I'm curious, without a significant amount of overlap between these cohorts in our buildings, why we're staggering the approach to bring students back in-person learning? So.
So, I mean, instructionally, we're staggering that, especially with our young, starting with some of our youngest students and most vulnerable, to get them back in, and, you know, to get them in front of their teachers, you know, as soon as possible. In terms of why we broke it up the way we did in terms of the grade levels, part of it is, as a district, we wanted to look at this in a way that we could phase in and mitigate the risk. So if we start with a small number, maybe not in every school, and we can monitor that for a couple of weeks, then bring in and start opening up some of the other schools, we can watch and make sure we're following those metrics and try to, you know, keep that risk low. Then, of course, you know, so as we're moving up in our phases, we're beginning to add older students, and we're starting with those that are possibly the most at-risk, like some of our students with special needs, some of our students with language barriers, some of our students who are at risk according to the state. So that's really where we were trying to keep that risk low and begin in every building with small number of students. And then we also want to be able to, as we start bringing them back, especially at our upper grades, really teach them the new way that they're going to have to move around the school, because it won't look the same way that it used to. They're not going to be able to go to their lockers, they're not going to be able to congregate and talk to each other in the hallway. So we have to kind of teach those routines, and so if we can bring some of the students back in small numbers, we could do that. And then we were keeping three weeks between the phases so we can watch and monitor those metrics to make sure that we're not bringing them back too quickly to have the numbers spike. I think also from a family standpoint, we also know that some of our older students are the ones that are at home with the younger students, and so we have to be really careful not to bring our older students back before our younger students. That is what...
Any other questions for Mike?
I think I share Mr. Rudy's comment on that. I'm not tracking why, like in my mind, you would leave the middle school so low for so long if you're trying to phase people in, why you wouldn't. If anything, I would be more aggressive on that, but I, I would tell you, I struggle with my comments on this because I try to be a board member that I'm on an opposite side of an issue, and I want to let decisions be made, and then we live with those decisions and go on to the next thing. And with this, with COVID, I realize that we're always going to be revisiting it. You may revisit this in a year, and so I, I'm trying to give you my comments in light of that, that I'm not, decisions were made, and that's where we're at. I would like to see if it would be possible a more, and I would think it would make sense if, I guess I want to stop here. One of the things, when the board decided to delay the decision, I didn't hear things about that we had a, like an approach on how we were going to come into school and handle it. What I heard was a lot of things non-education related about, how are we going to manage the buses, how are we going to manage lunches, or, you know, what about dividers and protection of staff and things like that? And in this reentry plan, I, I'm not, I guess I'm hearing that the building administrators bought into it, but I'm not hearing how those fundamental concerns that I heard from administrator after administrator are being addressed. And other than noticing that in the middle school, you went to an AB concept, which was not in the original plan, I'm not really understanding how, as a board member, how I sit here and say, okay, we've modified the plan, we think we're going to mitigate some of the risk by staggering it in and giving the buildings a chance to adapt to it, which makes sense to me. But what about all of the concerns? What about the non-educational pieces, the cleanliness, do we have enough janitors to clean? How do we manage bathrooms? How do we have kids in the hallway? I'm not hearing that part, and my fear is that because I'm not hearing that part, we are committing to phases or now giving parents another set of dates, that what will be the part if we get four weeks away from that or two weeks away from that, we're not pulling the rug out because of a Boone County Health Department metric, but we're pulling it out because we haven't addressed other root issues? And so have you revisited that part as a part of the administrative team? Are we comfortable now on cleaning? Are we comfortable now on, we know how to screen kids at the bus stop or at the school when they come in, or how they're going to wait outside? Have we addressed these other issues? That that's off the table, that we know we have that covered?
So there's a couple ripples to this. I would say, first off, because of the way it's structured and the way we're phasing back in with the numbers of students and the scheduling, that it's easier to manage, and it should be more successful. And that was kind of the way of building this as a progression, to be able to do it in a way that it's very manageable, and you get kids in the right routine with the right protocols, that minimizes risk for the kids. I will tell you, from the nurses' standpoints, they are trying to their best now to make sure that they've got the proper protocols in line for how to handle symptoms, cases, and that. So I think they're working on some stuff right now that they're going to be frantically trying to make sure that they're comfortable with. But as far as like the structuring, the busing and stuff like that, I think, for the most part, just by dealing with schedules and numbers and the progression that we've built to phase in, that that seems to be a better method and a better plan.
I'll also add that at the elementary level, one of the concerns was the lunches, because our lunchrooms are fairly small at our elementary school. So that is one of the reasons why we chose half-days, because then we do, we're not going to be feeding students at school. We can send students home with sack lunches, but we won't be feeding them in the cafeteria, because that was one of the big concerns of how to keep them apart and how to keep them separate. Because that was one of the big concerns of how to keep them apart and how to keep them safe and socially distanced at lunch. That's not as much of a concern in our older buildings, because we have more space and we're able to do the AB days, and so you'll have less students in the building.
I haven't really practiced the wording for this, so anybody chime in when I'm through, but I feel like we somewhat owe our audience an explanation of how this process works, because we're hearing a lot of the board deciding, we hear a lot of, why did you do this? You've taken away our ability to speak as parents. And Tom brings up a good point about these fundamental concerns, the, the myriad of meetings that the admin team has had, where the disgusting minutia that I'm not even sure you, you can really wrap your mind around how many there are. When we voted to, to go entirely remote, we did so on the recommendation of the superintendent and as he had conferred with his admin team. He presented that to us, and based on his recommendation, we voted to follow his recommendation. And I hope you folks...
Multiple stakeholders involved with that.
Yeah. I hope you folks understand that I might have had, I might want, each individual up here might want entirely something different as an individual and as an individual parent, might want something entirely different. And I hope you understand also, the same thing is sort of what's happening here in front of you is a superintendent and an admin team who have put together the next phase and a board that was notified they'd be getting this phase last week. And we've been given the details, they're now sharing the details with you, but what you're watching happening here is a group of individuals who are not the experts wanting to support the superintendent and the admin team, but having a lot of questions. And some of them, I'm assuming most of them, the admin team and the superintendent together have thought about this, have communicated with everybody in the district, at least the, the teaching staff, to, to decide, how can we do this? Can we do this? How do we best do this? So what you're watching right now is us ask some questions to, so that we can become confident that, yes, any concerns we might have, that we could think of, yes, you've thought of those. And what, I don't know what's about to happen here, but what I would imagine, as I listen to Tom ask some quick questions, and I'm sure he has plenty more, and I have a few also, is that there's a good chance this, the decision-making will not occur tonight. I could be totally wrong. I don't know where this will go. Because again, this is the first time that we are sitting together as a team and hashing out some of these details. But I have a feeling, maybe there will be some questions asked that would warrant us putting this off a little bit, looking into what metrics do we want to use? I don't, again, don't know that for sure, but I just thought I would explain to everybody what you're sort of watching and happening here as we volley around ideas and ask questions. Did, did I explain that well enough, board members? Is that okay? All right?
And I would also say that we are asking for input, too, on these plans, views and your thoughts as well. Timelines can be maneuvered, backed up, moved more aggressively. We tried to put what we felt was some logical sequential things together that made sense for a progression to bring kids back. But by all means, if there's a different direction or some other push or thoughts from the board, we are entertaining that as well tonight.
I think, Mike, all I would really, I, I also have a list of things that you, maybe you've thought of it, thought of it, we've done it, we've done it, or no, we should look into this and bring it back to you. We discussed at one point in time, Mike or Ed, about a facilities scale. Tom mentions the readiness in terms of facilities and, and extra staff if we needed them, and personal protective devices and hand sanitizers, and not only the, the items in, in our hands, but also how do we distribute them and how are they monitored? Have we settled on any sort of facility scale or any protocol that ups our former facilities in terms of cleanliness protocol?
So we have, we've, we've added protocols for cleaning and what those protocols are. We've added staffing. We do need to secure some more PPE from the nurses' side, which I know that they ordered yet today. We probably would go back and recheck protocols yet again with cleaning and make sure that everybody's on the same page with that, building to building, nurses and custodial. But we have most of the equipment we need, with the exception of what started, what was ordered today with nurses.
And in terms of tech, bringing students back?
So tech, with technology, we've been trying to grow our bandwidth, and we upped it from 300 now 500 worth of bandwidth, megabits per second. Bringing some of our kids back would even alleviate some more of the stress on the bandwidth with everybody streaming at the same time. So that would be a benefit of having kids back on the tech side.
And I apologize to those parents whose letters I didn't get to. As folks, you can well imagine, many of them were sharing the exact same concerns that you had. Some of them were just the opposite. We, we have a system, albeit not the greatest, but we're set in it and it's, it's working. Should we, should we really jump into something else? And so my question would be, if we were to, to bring students back and we exceeded some of our metrics, do we have a sort of back-out plan or back to remote, remote learning or?
So the first steps would be, like, if you're talking our metrics go in the wrong direction?
Yes, a breach.
So our first direction, or our first thing that we would do is if the, if the metrics went to the negative side, we would look to hold where we were at and not introduce the next phase. Now, if, and I'm talking about the state phases, if we go backwards on a phase there, that may have an impact if we're only allowed to bring, say, 10 people in, because we had to revert back to phase three, that would hinder us immensely. But that's a state phase that we don't have any influence over.
Okay.
I think I'd love to see a little bit more aggressive on the return to school plan here also. I just look at three buildings being empty. If we could mix phase one and two, maybe it's, then maybe mix three and four. We're not adding, adding a lot. I hate to see a building empty like that.
We're just sort of brainstorming here, folks. Lisa, do you have any questions or concerns or something? If, if hypothetically, we were to table this till, let's just say, example, next week, is there anything that you would like more specifics on, and maybe Mike can already give you those more specifics where the admin team can?
You ask me specifically?
Yes, you specifically.
Specifically. I, I feel, I think, pretty strongly that the life skills students and the...
I'm not sure your mic is on, Lisa, or maybe...
It's not on.
Maybe pull it up a little bit.
How about now? Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Yeah, okay. I was just saying that I, I feel pretty strongly that the life skills students and the IEP students need to be in the classroom. So if we did table it, I would be happy to come in the following week to do a special meeting to vote on it if more time was needed. I also feel that I need to be a little bit mindful of families, because there were people who are writing in, who are not wanting to go back or don't want their children to go back and are feeling anxious about that. So I'm curious to know, is a remote plan still an option for them? Is this a, everybody comes back, or is it you get a choice then to come back and/or not come back?
Remote is still an option to them. So they have choices there. And we could, like you're saying, that, why this is four phases, if it's something where the board wants to vote on one phase or specific things, we'd be open to that, too. I, I think from my standpoint, at some point, we've got to face the facts of how do we get kids back at school? And trying to do so in a way that's structured and safe for kids is, is, at some point, we've got to take that step and that hurdle, and that's what this plan is attempting to do.
And Mike, just again, hypothetically, if someone wished to make a motion and sort of piecemeal your phases, you have no solid intentions here?
I'm not, yeah, no. These are not easy issues, and I'm absolutely open to the ideas and the wishes of the board. If things need to go back and be reworked, you want things more aggressive, you want things a little more paced, do you want different ideas brought forward? Absolutely open to all of it. It's our first time presenting it to you, and like I said, we were just ramping it out last week to most of our staffs to get input. I'll be completely honest with you. I've got, as you can see here, I've got many, many parents that are ready to get kids back. I've got other people that are, as Lisa said, a little more anxious about it, some that are, want the remote choice. I'll be honest with you, we've got staff all on, all over the place, too, on that, too. I've got some staff that'll say, bring my kids back yesterday. I've got some staff that is, that has nervousness and anxiousness and concerns about it. It's just the nature of what we're dealing with right now.
If I could comment real fast, too, when we're talking about the different phases, I think it's important to note that phase one would begin October 5th, which is two weeks from yesterday. So ideally, if we could approve anything tonight, I, I would hope it would be phase one, so our parents and our teachers can begin planning for that. Because if we have to wait until next week, we won't be able to begin phase one on October 5th. We'll have to give everyone more time.
And setting up bus routes, getting commitments from families to, to come back to in-person, it'll take a little time, plus I want to make sure that I give communication out to parents and them enough time to make their plans accordingly to with it. So that was kind of why there's this week and a half, which is a tight window, but a week and a half, to be able to communicate, coordinate, plan, and allow parents to make their choice.
So then to speak into that, if, and I want to go back to look at the criteria that you're looking at, then, are you saying that if tonight we voted for phase one, that in business you would call it a go-no-go? So we're saying just, we're going to go, we're going to allow parents to make commitments to, you know, maybe daycare or home care, but we're committed to it even if the metrics go up? Because the window we're looking at to make a decision for a phase is two weeks prior to the date, the go, what would be, we'd call it a go-live date? Is, can we at least pull that out of there, that we feel that we meet the metrics, that maybe we'll, in two weeks, we'll talk and change what the metrics are for phase two, but for now on phase one, to bring that beginning part, we meet the metrics and we can make that decision? And even if the guidelines go in a different direction, that may affect phase two, but we can commit to the parents? That's what we're...
Yeah, we're saying as of today, we meet the metrics for that. Yep.
That brings up a very good point. If we would be very clear tonight, if we're going to make a motion, what that motion is, what the, the dates will be, exactly what our motion will be, we'll have to be very aware of which motion we're making.
Yeah, I would agree with that. There's another piece, too, that I failed to mention in my opening there. There was also a recommendation in your written piece about extracurricular, and that if we're allowing groups of students to come back, that my recommendation would be to allow the extracurricular side of things to, to move forward, so some of our sports could do their non-contact days as well.
Does anybody have any comments on the sports aspect of it?
That can be a separate motion, then, for the sports?
I, as it's written, it is...
It's written as one, but if you wanted to separate it out, you could.
But I'm, I'm thinking what, that we might want to be, again, very specific and maybe make a point of stating which, which components we are approving when the motion is made. Go ahead, Brian. Ed?
So I guess I want to direct a couple of questions to a couple of staff members that are here. Barb and Julie, you know, we saw some statements from the two of you, that you guys were part of this process from the start, and I guess, as a board member, I have a really hard time understanding why we employ health professionals if you guys aren't the ones leading this charge. But one of the things that I saw that I think bothered me the most was the comment about the PPE. I know for a fact on the record that I asked that question at the facilities meeting less than a week ago. We were told that we had so much here that we didn't want to order anymore because we didn't want to be stuck with it. So for you guys to turn around and tell us something completely different, that's very troubling to me personally. So please comment on both of those, on your part in this decision-making process, and then about what your concerns are about the PPE.
So I want to make it clear what my position is, because I am a parent and a nurse in this district. I'm a, I'm a parent of a third grader who's at home struggling very much with remote learning, just like all the parents have expressed their concerns. I definitely want my child back in school, so I, I am in full support of reopening, and I believe that we can find a way to do it safely. But as a nurse in the district, I have an obligation to advocate for my...
Julie, not to interrupt you, I, I really want to hear what you have to say.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Can you pull your mask down a little bit, so we can, so we can hear you?
So I'll start over. I'm, I'm a parent of a third grade student in the district. She has an IEP, and she's struggling very much at home. So I want to make it clear what, what my position is, and it's very much to bring students back. I, I fully believe that we can make a plan that's safe, and, but as a nurse in this district, I have to advocate on behalf of my team for the safety and health of the staff, students and families in this district. I, I do not believe that we are going to be ready by October 5th. Some of those reasons include a shortage of PPE. Whether we have it in the district, not all the buildings have it. So where is it? We, we just need to be on the same page about that. We have not received cloth, cloth masks from the state yet, so we're still waiting on that. We also have been working on reopening protocols, health protocols, how to manage symptomatic students in the building. The nurses, we do have a draft we're working on of that and finalizing that, but staff has to be trained on that. So if there's a symptomatic student in the building, how are we going to manage that student going from classroom to office? Like, all the staff has to be on board, because we really have to mitigate the spread in the building. We also need to prep the buildings with isolation rooms. We just, we have a lot of work yet to do. So to be ready, I, I do believe that we could support opening for life skills. I, I would support that. I feel that the team, our team feels that way of nurses. But we just need more time to open it up to full grades, is our opinion. And Barb, I think you had...
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. I, I first heard about the life skills portion of this last, I believe it was Tuesday, when we had a meeting. At that point, that was the only group that was talked about that was coming back. I was all for it. I really feel that the life skills group needs to come back. They really need that one-on-one. They need the repetition, they need the in-person. And I didn't really learn about it until late Thursday, when I heard about a union meeting that went on that talked about extra gra, extra grades coming back and what this phase, these phases look like. And then when Mike talked with us on Friday morning with Julie and I, that's when we for sure knew about the phases and how this went out. Before that, we were kind of left in the dark, and that's one of the things that our nursing team felt like that we were left in the dark about this. So we are scrambling, trying to get everything on board and up to date. Like Julie said, we've got protocols that we have drafts of and plans of that we need to tweak and get finals for, but they're not totally ready. One of the things is the metrics with our numbers, including today with our 23 new cases in Boone County, which is up. Yesterday was 30, again, which was up. So our metrics is really not any better than it was in August, when we went to the e-learning, unfortunately. Bottom line, that's where we are. If Winnebago County, which is right next door, probably where a lot of the families work, go to shop, go to do anything, is probably Winnebago County, they're at 8% and over 8%. This is day two of that. If they have three consecutive days over 8%, that could put our whole region back to phase three. And then we'd be in the 10 groups, the 10 people in a group that would be able to meet and shut down a lot of the things that we do in our region. So it doesn't only affect Winnebago County, even though our county is at, what, 6.25 or something like that, and 6.5, but still, we are in the warning. So we are no better than we were in August. One of the other things that I wanted to talk about was the shortages of possibly staff coming back and of nursing. I'm thankful that I have a nurse in every building right now. However, if that nurse is exposed and does become ill or has need to isolate, I really don't have a lot of backup plan of who is going to be the nurse in that building. I've talked to, to my sub-nurses that I have had and have been very loyal and wonderful and have been very loyal and wonderful sub-nurses for our team. I have two of them that are retired nurses who do not feel that they want to expose themselves because of their compromised medical condition and their age, or bring it home to the, to their families. So they're not willing to come back at this point. But they both said to me, please, don't leave me out of the loop. If we get this thing handled, I would love to come back. I love to be with the kids. I love taking care of the kids. I have another nurse that is willing, and right now she's on maternity leave. She just had a baby. Two other ones have full-time jobs in hospitals and, well, three others actually, have full-time jobs in hospitals. And because of the shortages they have in the hospitals because of exposures and whatnot and illnesses, they said they would love to come back and help us, but at this point, they don't know if they're, how much their availability is going to be. So that's a piece of this puzzle that I am struggling with to be able to provide nursing care in each building. So we have it for our students when they do come back. Like I, like Julie was saying, we have drafts, we have plans in place, nothing is set. I worked with Kaylee Peterson at the district office and with McGill again this morning because the order I had put in for PPEs previously, they've been out of stock, unavailable, cannot ship, don't know when it's gonna ship, that type of thing. So I put in an order, I set it up last night, then tweaked it this morning, talked to McGill, three of the things that I had put in for, she could tell me that these things are now out of stock since last night when I started the order. So we had to tweak it on the phone this morning. And dear Kaylee, I put her on the spot that she had to rewrite that PO before Melissa could sign it this morning and get it shipped off immediately, hoping and praying that we can get that PPE in case you folks decided that you wanted to bring us back on October 5th. At this point, no, I am not prepared with PPE for the nursing staff and a lot of the staff, special needs staff also. Those are just a few of the highlights. Some of the other things I'm working on right now is the totals of students that would not be able to come back to school because they still have not turned in physicals, their immunizations are not up to date. I have seniors that about a third of the class is not going to be able to come back if, if they came back October 5th because they don't have their meningitis up to date. I have freshmen, there was, out of the 144 in the class of incoming freshmen on September 8th, which would have been our first day of school, 105 of them still didn't have a physical. So I have been scrambling, calling, emailing, leaving messages, trying to get that clientele to be up to date with our board-approved policy of first-day exclusion. And I want to say, I don't think I have that number, oh yes, I do. Right now, Capron has 16 preschool and kindergartners who, if we have the October 5th start date, will not start because as of right now, they don't have their physicals in. 11 at Papa Grove are kindergartners that wouldn't be, not be able to start. And Manchester has nine students right now that would not be able to start. So that's another piece of the puzzle that we are working on. So not only are we trying to get all of the metrics taken care of, the protocols taken care of, things ordered and in place, we're trying to keep up with the state standards and the board-approved protocol that we have to follow.
Julie and Barb, thank you for your candor. And for our audience tonight, again, just another of the myriad of things for us to consider as we're making this, this final decision. Mike, I would ask you, October 5th was just sort of a, we, we pulled that, we just set that as a date. There's no specific reason it would have to be October 5th if we needed more time for any one of these, of these issues to be resolved? These things that Tom sort of brought up that I'm kind of calling fundamental concerns?
It wasn't just pulled up.
If we postpone the vote tonight, we might not make the October 5th deadline, but the October 5th deadline isn't a, a do-or-die sort of deadline?
We can push it back, but we felt that with October 5th, we can still get done, even with the nurses' concerns, we feel we can still be there.
So Barb, do we have enough PPE for even implement Phase One? I mean, there's not that many kids coming back.
Not, not in the way Phase One is right now.
So there's two types of PPE. One, when we were talking about at the facilities, we were talking like hand sanitizers, the cleaning, the cleaning, things and like that. What Barb is speaking specifically to is, I guess, PPE that the nurses need or was specifically need during the day, while, while they're working with students.
Especially with the special needs students that would be coming in. We need the face shields. We have some of them, but I don't think there's enough to cover the nursing, the, the special, special ed teachers and the pairs so that they are, are all covered. Because a lot of times, that clientele is unable to wear a mask. And so we have to just really make sure that our staff are kept safe. And they would need the face shield and a mask.
So, and let me clarify a couple things here, Barb, because I think, I want to make sure it's communicated. We do have face shields already. I want to say it's 300.
100.
And then the other thing that we have is we have enough masks to do the district, I think, twice almost right now, because we've not only built our masks up, we got a donation from Fiat Chrysler.
We do not have pediatric masks.
The pediatric masks. So there's some specific things in there that we do need to. But there's still some things that we probably need to communicate with you that we do have on, on hand.
So is there a chance you guys, you, to this point, you said you haven't been able to secure? Is there a chance that it's coming in the next 10 days?
There's a chance.
A chance that we're to do, right?
But I can't say that sitting here right now that we are 100% covered. The safety of our staff as well as our students is important to us.
Us too.
Yes.
So is there a chance that the rapid testing will be available for us at some point before the end of the year? The saliva rapid test?
I am unsure if that's going to be available that quickly. I would like it to be.
It's been rolled out to all the universities, it's been rolled out to some of the bigger campuses in the Chicagoland area. I guess I'm just curious about whether we, whether we've asked or whether we know what the availability of that is.
We have asked before, but we do not have any confirmations for sure because there's so many incorrect results from them.
Yeah, I realize that they're less than perfect, but at least they would give us some kind of an idea. So do we know, the ultimate question is, I guess, the one that I've struggled with as we go forward is, Rockford School District has 60, or 37 schools that have COVID cases inside of them, both staff and kids. Nobody's been shut down. Dakota has three kids sick. They're, they go down for two weeks. Stockton is in school for 24 hours or two days. They, they're shut down. Geneseo, Moline, East Moline. All these school districts that have tried to go back have been shut down. And I guess what I struggle with is, are we better off staying where we are and, and, and not risk getting sent home and being sent back into quarantine? Do we know how many kids this high school could sustain having COVID cases and still stay open? Has that question been answered? Is there a standard or a metric that they use for when we decide how we're gonna quarantine and when we're gonna close a school?
The biggest piece of that would be the social distancing. So if we're able to keep masks on all students and staff and social distance, that reduces the number greatly that we, you know, would have to quarantine. So if we can minimize the number of, you know, students in the building at one time and, you know, the reopening plan is pretty good as far as like, you know, keeping it small numbers, that would be ideal, you know, spreading the students out as much as possible. That's what the Health Department would go by is, you know, were you able to social distance and wear a mask, then your, your risk is very low. So, does that answer your question?
I guess what I was looking for is, you know, why is, why does there seem to be such a big discrepancy about what everybody's doing? Does that help the individual counties, departments of health?
Yeah, well, it has to do, they follow the same guidance, but it has to do with the spacing in the schools and, you know, the level of exposure. It's, it's just, that's, they have to follow that criteria. And if the students are crammed into, you know, numerous students into, you know, a small space and they weren't six feet apart, they're gonna probably quarantine an entire class. Versus if they have 10 students in a classroom and they're all well-spread out and they're wearing masks and, you know, they probably won't quarantine the entire, you know, classroom.
Is the plexiglass still on the table for us in Boone County? Is that still a requirement for kids who can't be more than six feet apart?
It's still recommended. It, it's not a requirement, but it is recommended.
Not sure that answers a question either, but I'll let you off the hook on that one.
Thank you.
So if, if you guys were part of this to start with, what would we be looking at? What do we need to get done? We need to get, try and figure out how to get this to work. What do we need to do?
Basically, the amount of time for us to get everything in place.
Yeah, again-
More than if it's put out tonight, that's like a week and a half to try to get so many pieces of that puzzle put together.
Yeah, I guess I can apologize for that because I really asked that question for a specific reason, which was this. I was assured that we had so much stuff, we were afraid to order more because we didn't know what we'd do with it. I don't know. Struggling with that. Thank you.
I will also add for the board's consideration, if you're, if you remember some of the conversations we had about whether or not the superintendent needed our support, whether or not the superintendent needed a vote. In this case, we are going to need to vote to undo the vote that we took last time. So I just thought I would let everybody know that when we decide to do something, what we're going to do, we'll need to go to a vote so that we can, in essence, amend the last vote that we took. And it-
One of the questions I have after listening to the nurses' comments on this is I, I'm really at a loss on how we're almost at, into October and we have the PPE issues, so I'm really struggling with that. And in addition, what I struggle with, when I look at, if we could, I think we're trying to, to do the whole meal here, and I want to focus on Phase One because it seems like there's some issues here. But if I look at Phase One and I look at the numbers and I, I came to this meeting maybe with the assumption that we had PPE for the whole district, and now we're just talking about this much. I struggle to see how we don't have enough face shields and masks and things like that to do even Phase One. And the one nuance that you mentioned here tonight, I guess I never really heard of the, a size of pediatric mask. And so I guess I want, I want clarification on that. With all of our PPE and for, if we committed to Phase One today, how much of a burn rate do we have? How many days could we support Phase One with the inventory that we have today on committing to that? Do we have enough to get us through the end of the year? Do we only have a month's worth? Do we have, what do we have to get through Phase One?
That's not, I'm not, I can't answer that question.
And I, I will speak generally about this. Generally speaking, the district, from a district level, has purchased hand sanitizer. We have face shields, we purchased face shields. We were going to purchase a huge number, but when the state rolled back and said only certain people need to wear face shields, we ordered a smaller number. But we do have, each school has a box, and then we have some extras at the district office. We have face shields, hand sanitizer. We've had tons of masks donated to the district. So from a district level, we purchased the, the major things that we knew each staff. We did not, though, anticipate, or we charged the buildings to say what specific things you need. So like, our special ed students may need something that's more specific. I can't speak to what was ordered for those specific things. We just ordered from a large scale. From a district standpoint, we have hand sanitizer. We have hand sanitizer pumps around the district. We have the masks, we have the shields. So some of those things we purchased for everybody, if that helps, makes sense. But I, I can't speak to how much we have on hand.
I guess if we were to commit to Phase One tonight for an October 5th start, do, are we confident that we have enough PPE to get us through? We're not gonna have to stop it in two weeks or three weeks because we ran out of PPE. There's enough to get us through the end of the year?
I don't know specifically what Barb and Julie are lacking yet on their side. I know that they were speaking specific, different specific stuff than the general population stuff. So if you guys want to speak to that. Do you have any on hand at all?
There was a number of things that I know that Melissa and Kaylee or whoever at the district office ordered and obtained over the summer. However, the box of shields for the high school never came. Julie brought me four, four, from the upper elementary to be sure we had some. There are no, there are no gowns for the nurses who have to be in the isolation room with a sick child that, you know, we have to think, you know, when they come in, they're ill, they have those symptoms. We have to prepare thinking that they possibly have COVID. So we have to, in fact, tomorrow, the whole nursing team is going down to the Health Department to be fitted for the N95 masks, which we would have to use if we were in that isolation room with a potentially COVID student before the parent would pick them up. We do not have the gowns. They've always been unavailable, back order every time I put in an order. So again, I put them in, again, on this order today, talking to McGill, and they're assuring me that they had that in stock, those in stock, when I placed that order.
Did you put a rush on it?
Hopefully, they just have that. They usually turn around in 24 hours and have the order to me.
Okay.
Disinfecting wipes, I do not have those at the high school. They never came over. And Capron didn't get them either?
So again, we have those in stock though.
And again-
A few months.
For purposes of this, if we're short at the high school, the high school has forced, potentially four students in Phase One. So I'm, I'm wanting to keep the discussion more on Phase One and where the population centers are and do we have sufficient PPE for those areas? Is what I, and then, these are all good points for going into what the date would be on Phase Two or Phase Three, or could we accelerate it?
Mike, what, where are you at at this point in time with what you're requesting?
Still sticking with the recommendation I gave.
If we looked at this as an à la carte, is anybody confident with any part of this? I'll give my own personal opinion, to have the nurses speak such causes me great pause. And I don't know that I in good conscience could move us as a district forward with those concerns. But I don't wish to throw out the baby with the bathwater, so to speak. And I was wondering if there's any à la carte, so, so to speak, IEP? It would, I don't know what the numbers would look like in Phase One or if it would be manageable if we only went with IEP and OT and PT? Because again, I'm not the expert at the table and I'm- Because again, I'm not the expert at the table and I feel a little odd even throwing that out there because this is not my plan at all. Anybody else have any thoughts or wish to share any thoughts to get us moving forward?
From the very beginning, my belief was, and some of it has been shared out here, is that I feel that the district should make commitments on what they're willing to do for CDC guidelines, for Department of Public Health, whether it's how often we clean the bathrooms or how we serve the lunches or how we do things, how we put, you know, the kids in isolation, that there should be a set of guidelines and as a parent, I look at those guidelines and the promises made and I make a decision on whether or not I send my child to the school. And I bear the responsibility, providing that the district lives up to what they told me that they were gonna do. So I sit here tonight and I, from what I hear and what the struggles are in things is I would like to see it more aggressive. I'd like to see us commit to Phase 2, 3, and 4 and even pull the days in. But I'm willing, and I guess I will do it at this part, is I'm willing to make a motion that we do Phase 1 of the presentation presented to us with an October 5th start date. And that I would really prefer, if I can hold my motion here for a minute, to not do the sports and to have that considered separately. To not muddy it up if somebody wants to reject this portion, that it doesn't muddy up the other one. So my motion would be to proceed with Phase 1 as presented with an October 5th start date. And I guess that would be the end of my motion.
I'll second. And that is not including?
Not the sports, not the extracurriculars.
Not included.
Extracurriculars, not in this motion.
Not in this motion.
We just gotta separate it out.
I would hope we could offer that later.
All right, we have a motion by Kinzer and a second by Hazelhurst. All right. Now, so we have a motion on the table. Mary, would you like to give us some thoughts? Some insights, something to consider as we move forward to vote?
I'm in favor of the life skills kids coming back in. I think they need the most help.
Mary, could you speak up? I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'm in favor of the life skills coming back. I think they would benefit the most from in-person. I'm not as much on board with the other parts, with the regular kids coming in. I just don't think we're quite there yet with the levels of the number of cases of COVID that are showing up now that other schools in the area have opened.
Mary, a motion and a second, just as a reminder, if it were to fail, that would not negate the opportunity to make a second motion if it came to that, if this motion were to fail. Maybe along with Mary's questions, I would ask the nurses, if we did go on, just, again, I tried to minimize, is there something we could pass, a population we could meet, that we could serve, that you would feel comfortable? And I hate to put you folks in the hot seat, but I appreciate your candor again.
I think, I believe as a team, I think we would support life skills only, you know, starting on October 5th, but not the full classes in the vern and pre-K.
She said she could support the life skills on October 5th. So again, if this motion were to fail and that a second motion were made, at least if we were to, if we wanted to feel better about what the nurses, I mean, of all the things that we're trying to assimilate here upon making our decision, that might be an important one for those in this unenviable position of voting this up or down.
And Mr. Havely, if you don't mind if I interrupt just for a second?
Go ahead, Jared.
You know, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to comment on pre-K, K, as I'm not an administrator in one of those buildings, but I just wanna put it on record because I think I would regret if I didn't say something that I am in full support of bringing back our life skills program here at least at 5:8. And I don't know the, you know, the details of the other grades, but I know that the upper elementary is ready to bring back our life skills students.
Thank you, Jared. We appreciate your input. Mary, did you have anything further to add?
I guess I just would just add that I, myself, I'm always going to err on the side of being overly cautious. I'm sitting here as a parent who, of a child who at one point was very critically ill and it was the worst thing that happened and I would not want to put somebody else in that position because of the decision I made. And I, there's, I don't know what the right answer is here, but I will always err on the side of caution.
Thanks, Mary. Yeah, Brian, any thoughts you'd like to share before we put this to vote?
I'd like to see it move faster. Definitely need to get the PPE, see what we can do.
And again, that would not be necessarily something that couldn't be come out of this. As of now, we have Phase 1 with October 5th start date. If we were to decide to have maybe again, a meeting in a week, maybe conferences could be had, data could be gathered and we could be presented with Phase 2, 3, and 4 with dates that are much increased, much shortened, timeframes that are much shortened. Anything else, Brian? Ed, do you have any thoughts you'd like to share before we vote? No? I guess I would appreciate again, the nurses chiming in. We, for the audience, we did also get the results of some surveys from the staff and from the two unions to also add to our milieu of things for us to consider. And I'd like to, at least myself personally, like to remind everybody, I'm not trying to reach a 0% infection. I'm not trying to, I don't think that's achievable, but we are trying to do the best for all of our students and make sure that we are especially within health regulations. That'd be my two cents. Tom? You're good? Lisa?
I think I'd like to support the nurses as well and, you know, if you really feel like you can only commit to life skills.
Lisa, your mic is, I think, too far away. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna try again. I just think that I can't deny what the nurses are saying. So if there isn't PPE in the buildings to bring back your pre-K and your K, maybe push that date back. You know, I don't know, by a week, by two weeks, whatever it is that allows, you know, you guys to get ahead of the game, so to speak, and if you can commit maybe to bringing back life skills, like, let's move forward on that and maybe look again at the others.
Carl?
I mean, from when we started this back in August and even the end of July, really seriously considering what remote learning looked like, the goal has always been to bring our kids back to in-person education and that, I don't think that has changed. We have a number of districts around us that have made different decisions than our district has made. And so I have a couple of thoughts. I guess one being that I don't know, Mike, if you've been in communication with other superintendents in the area and have been tracking their numbers closely. We are a different district. We are a lower population density. But I'm also very aware that we are the largest employer for the northern part of the county. We have probably the highest concentration of bodies in buildings. And so we have a pretty, we have a serious responsibility to our students, to our parents, to our staff and our faculty. But that being said, we have an opportunity, I think, to recognize that we have some some very large educational challenges across the board, being remote, and in particular, we're finding that especially that we have an opportunity to care for perhaps some of our most critical needs. I'm 100% for as much as we can working across all levels of administration, bringing back in our students who need that care. What I am concerned a little bit about is our clarity of communication with our parents and our families. What comes from a meeting like tonight where we're only approving maybe one phase of a multi-phase plan will not add to, I think, a clear district message about what our long-term or our short-term goals for bringing our students back. And so I would like to see those additional phases, if we approve a single phase, addressed soon. And would be very willing to come back in even within a week if we were able to solidify what those next phases look like and bring it to the board so that we can, you know, have some clarity on that. But I think communication with our families is going to be really, really important. Part of the other piece of that, that I think has the potential for being kind of ambiguous and I think would benefit from a lot of clarity too. And I think maybe Tom was talking a little bit about this as well. But being as clear as possible what our criteria is for how we're changing the population in our buildings, what it looks like from a county standpoint, what it looks like in our region, so that we are as concisely and clearly as possible preparing families for how this plan may fluctuate to try and give our working parents and our households as much potential clarity and lead time as their situation might change as we bring students back in, but maybe also have to bring them back out again. Personally, I would like to see a plan that potentially addresses a more condensed approach. Again, being as sensitive as possible to the county numbers. I think we have building cohorts that are fairly isolated. I know that we want to try to mitigate as many population groups as possible from overlapping and be able to watch those numbers closely yet. And we're going to be dealing with potentially some equipment shortages, which I would also not endorse bringing kids back in if we can't adequately supply our staff, our faculty, and our students with the protective gear that they need. But I'd like to see a plan that addresses more parallel reintroductions, especially as we're dealing with larger buildings, so that we're reintroducing students in, quicker I suppose would be the right word, but bringing them back in in more parallel tracks as opposed to spacing it out as long as we are composing with the four phases.
Mike, regardless of how the vote goes, I'm sorry, Carl, were you through? Yes? Mike, regardless of how the vote goes, I think maybe we should talk about perhaps having another special meeting in soon.
That's fine.
And I would remind everybody as we go into the vote that the vote as is is to approve Phase 1 as is with those populations with the October 5th start date. And should the motion fail, other motions can be put on the table. Does anybody have any other comments they'd like to interject? All right, are we clear about the motion, Kelly? All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mulholland?
No.
Mr. Rudy?
Can I ask for the motion to be read again and polled, please?
Proceed with Phase 1 as presented with the October 5th start date.
Minus sports. Does that need to be added?
Down, not including the extracurricular piece.
Sorry, say again, Kelly. It cannot be amended now that we have a vote? Or?
Was the motion to proceed with Phase 1 as presented with an October 5th start date, not including the extracurricular.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Havely?
No.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladine?
No.
Mrs. Maxi?
Motion fails. Would anybody like to put another motion on the table?
I will. I'll move to approve having life skills kids come back and get us started in this process.
Minus sports. With life skills, October 5th date?
Yes.
Minus sports and please excuse my ignorance here. Life skills, does that, what exactly does that include? I see OT, PT on here. We've mentioned IEP and what?
All the services that go along with our life skills students.
Okay, which would not include IEP or OT or PT?
Okay, I can explain. Yep, no problem. So our life skills students would be, we have categories for EE placements is what it's called. And so you have your O1 placements, which are in the classroom for 80%, 80% or more of their day in the gen ed classroom. Then you have the middle level where they're in the general education classroom from 80%, or from between 80 and 40% of their day, that's an O2. And in O3, they are only in their gen ed classroom for less than 40% of their day. And so those are a category O3. And so those are our students that we consider to be part of our life skills program and those O3 students are the ones that we're looking to bring back. I also would like to have, you know, those students that could come back in for OT and PT by appointment because I do believe and I've confirmed with our nursing staff on this, that we can do that safely. And that would include any students who receive OT and PT support and could come in by an appointment basis.
Okay.
Right now, the students that we have that would be considered an O3 student, we have 18 total students. So there are four at the high school, three at the UEA and middle school, and 11 at elementary level.
Okay. And, but IEPs are out of, off the table?
We are recommending currently, the first students that we bring back are our O3, which are our media students.
Okay. Just trying to make sure I'm using the terminology correctly. Phase 1, life skill students, October 5th, minus sports. Was there any other aspect to that?
Why did they add the OT and the PT by appointment?
Thank you. I'm gonna be very cognizant of what we're approving here. Am I missing any, any aspect of that motion? Any discussion about that? We have a motion on the table. Phase 1 with life skills, October 5th date, minus sports, OT and PT by appointment.
I'll second the motion.
The motion by Mulholland, second by Maxi. I'd like to ask our nurses if that is still amenable to you. Can we, in your estimation, meet? Okay. Any other questions?
The comment that just comes to me is, four weeks or so, or six weeks ago, we went on the administration's approval to delay the start of school. The same administration team brought us a recommendation tonight to proceed with four phases. We cut it down to one phase and we're overriding that recommendation based on two members of the administration's staff. And I, I think what the board has done is a dangerous piece and it's not consistent with how we've made decisions in the past. Granted, I went against the recommendation last time, so you could say I'm being a little hypocritical, but I, I don't approve, I, not approve. I don't concur with how we're coming about this decision tonight. I think we're, we've asked administration to do something twice and we pick and choose on how we come about our decision on it. And I, I will support what we're doing here, but I think we're being inconsistent as a Board of Education.
Tom, I can appreciate your input here, but just to throw my own two cents into it. And when Mike and I met to put the agenda together, it would have been, my wishes not to put this on as a vote at all because you guys know how strongly I feel about things, especially as important as this, being first mentioned to us on Tuesday, if I don't have my dates incorrect. The document was actually uploaded on Friday and we're being asked to vote on it. And there are all these, I think, legitimate concerns and questions. And I think Mike, when we talked, he agreed that he, this is coming at us quickly. And we're in that, we're in that weird, which is why I keep calling it an unenviable position, that that had I been on board developing this plan and had I heard, felt like somebody would have mentioned, where are the nurses on this? And I feel like they would have been brought into the conversation perhaps a little bit earlier if we had all worked on this together. If this were a plan that we all created together, I'd feel much more comfortable. But we didn't create it together. Tonight is the first night I've had any meaningful conversation about this and that we've had an opportunity to share it. I, I'm, I'm not even really comfortable voting on it at all. I would like us to postpone it till Tuesday to give us another week to really have some meetings and make sure that things are coming in or that they can with very, very certain, higher degrees of certainty say that can't be done, it won't be in, or that the details were worked out. But that isn't the case and we find ourselves in that position again, being told if we don't vote on this tonight, then we can't reach the October 5th. And I, I can't say enough how that is not, I don't think that's fair to us as a board to be put in that position. But I'm willing to work with Mike, because we discussed this earlier, and he wasn't, he wasn't staunch on his stance that this must pass or i- in its entirety. I think we're working in trying times, difficult times with ever-changing targets and orders that normally come in and aren't coming in and very vocal populations that feel very strongly, but we're dealing with multiple vocal populations that feel very strongly about issues. So I appreciate your thought and I do agree that it is sort of a slippery slope, which is why I always ask for this to be more of a team effort and for these things to start very low at a committee, research, work their way up, ultimately make it to us, be presented to us once, give us a little while, ideally a month, to stew on it, sit on it, ask those questions, work those details out, and then vote on it the next month. And I feel we haven't been given that opportunity. So I appreciate your words and, but that would be my two cents on the issue. Anybody else want to share anything about this? We do have a motion on the table, a motion and a second. Motion by Mulholland and a second by Maxi.
This, this may seem nitpicky and I don't, I don't mean it to be at all, but I'll go back to my previous statement about clarity of communication.
Carl, I hate to be this guy, but could you please? Thank you. Try to project.
Okay. We're calling this Phase One. We've now modified it so it is not including our pre-K AV cohorts and our kindergarten, kindergarteners half-days, correct? So we are just down to life skills. And we are also separating out athletics, that is no longer a part of this, but we will address that in just a little bit. Again, communication for me is really important and I feel like by referring to this still as a phase, when it is no longer a phase, because we also don't have the rest of the plan that is presented and approved, I would still very much like to see a consolidated plan for reentry, but that is no longer what we're actually talking about anymore. I guess maybe that doesn't change anything. Okay, well, maybe I'm not a hundred percent sure where I was ending up going with that. Only that to say, we can pull these things out and maybe this is also something you said earlier about the need for us to amend our previous motion as a board. I would like to think that we have the flexibility as a board to empower our district administration to make decisions about bringing cohorts in as needed without necessarily undermining or changing the fundamental vote for that we had previously for remote learning and instruction. Now, eventually, when we get to the point that we're approving maybe a three-phase or four-phase approach and we're addressing the entire district education again, that does make sense for a board vote. But at this point, I would like to have seen this be more of a discussion piece, less of a vote then, that we don't need to approve as a board, have the administration say they are prepared and adequately staffed and adequately supplied to support these at-risk population groups in our, in our district.
I hear you. I believe what you're seeing is a group of volunteers being asked to vote on something, trusting the research of, of those that have been hired to do so, and also sitting in the hot seat with a group of population that would very much like their kids to go back to school. Many of us have our kids out of school also. I, I think what you're seeing is a bone being thrown of sorts. I, I wouldn't disagree with you at all. Like I said before, I'd like to see this pushed off even further and give us more time to have more conversation to bring a multi-phase motion brought to us. That is not, however, the motion on the table, hindsight being what it is. I'm still going to strongly advocate for a special meeting and very soon, at which time maybe there will be other phases brought that we feel more comfortable with and maybe even might be brought into the discussion, if possible. Tom, I think you were going to say something? Was that your hand going up? The teacher in me saw a hand, so, okay, no. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Mike, let's talk about a special meeting soon, if that is amendable to you. Was sports to be brought up again as an individual item? Yes. Somebody begin.
I'll make a motion to approve extracurricular contact hours as presented.
We have a motion, sports as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Hazelhurst, a second by Kinzer. Thank you, folks. Can I ask those who made the motions and removed it from the original, is there a reason for separating them?
My only thought on it was that it complicated, I thought it complicated the first issue.
Any further discussion as mo-, on sports as presented? Hearing the none, roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Motion passes. Fun, we get to talk about a bike path resolution, now for something a little bit more light.
So the Boone County Highway Department is asking for the board to approve the resolution, a resolution of support from our district for a bike path that would come from Belvedere of Papa Grove Road and end here at the Central Campus. They've already used half a million dollars worth of money to get the bike path started down in Belvedere over towards Moringa Road. The end goal is to have Belvedere, Papa Grove completely connected through a bike path, like I said, is along Papa Grove Road that comes up and ends at Central Campus, and then one day to have it connect to the Rockford Bike Paths as well. They have already secured $500,000, gotten it started. They're applying for another, I believe it's $2 million, and are looking for our resolution. It does not require any money from our district, only our support. And hopefully over time, it'll be a $2.5 million project that'll connect Papa Grove, Rockford, and Belvedere all together into bike paths.
Do we have a picture of that by chance, do we?
It was in the packet of the trail, yes.
All right, do we have a motion and a second?
You say we had a motion?
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve. Our resolution of support is presented.
Okay, resolution of support. We have a motion by Kinzer. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Maxi. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Motion passes. That brings us to executive session.
Don't we have another item?
That's right, I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me, I even have it on my notes, Mr. Kinzer. Thank you for catching that. That brings us to board level committees. Tom, you still have a desire for a committee related to, commit as it relates to curriculum and education at the, at the school?
Yes.
Mike and I have talked about this and we would like to meet to discuss the details. Would you like to get a tentative, actually, it wouldn't be tentative, it would be a firm vote of support from the board before we begin researching it, or would you like to put together the details? I will leave that up to you. It was my thought that we would, I'm assuming, everybody would be okay with that, and that we'd bring back the details for them to approve. But if you would just like a general approval, we can take a vote on that.
As I mentioned in the last meeting, that, and I've talked to the superintendent and the board president, one of the things that even that I heard here tonight, and I guess I would always start my comment is that I don't mean to offend anyone when I, when I make these comments, and so I appreciate the work that the superintendent and Carrie specifically that you've done towards the, the phases that you brought here tonight. One of the things that I think speaks to the need of this committee is some of the way that the presentation came. Whether the, you know, the audience realizes it or not, this board member heard about the plan, I think Thursday during the day. And one of the things that struck me in the presentation was the part about stakeholders. And in a vacuum, stakeholders may be the administrative team, or it may be the teachers or the union that's affected by it, but we have stakeholders even in the board, as the president has alluded to, that would have been, like to have participated in making it. Members of the community that have come up to meeting after meeting, whether those that support e-learning or those that support in-school instruction. I think that there is a need for us to step out and hear what the difference is as a part of this. That is me, I'm sorry. But there's a need to expand what our base of stakeholders is. The other thing that I would see this committee is doing, that even though we may have one of these committee meetings and all seven of us show up to it as board members, the nature of this meeting is that the public sits out there and we sit here and there is no interaction between us as far as what do you want and how do you want to see it and what are our concerns and what things. I think by getting all of that in there, we make better decisions in how we do things. And so my thought in the pandemic committee is that we would have this committee and it, I would have one idea how it would have to run, but as a board level committee, the board obviously would have to agree to it. The administrative team would have to, want to participate in it or it would do nothing. And, but we would use it to facilitate communication to our stakeholders to, not only to the board that we understand how things are going in, but as these very tough decisions are made, they're made more to where, if I could pick on four people that I agree with what you're saying or not with what you're saying, but we come to an end product that we feel we were heard because we were heard, and that we come to decisions that it's not an enemy on the other side, it's just maybe somebody with a different opinion. And I think that's what we need on this, because it is difficult navigating that we're going through right now. And I think this committee could help with that. In addition, besides that, we have organizations out there where we could, the organization I work for has a command center during this time, and there's experts in that command center that live in the community. So there's, and I'm sure there's other ones around, but we could bring in people that have gone through this, have reopened buildings or reopened industries or are participating and could have ideas and shed not only that perspective, but, but others in there as well. Maybe that's my vision and maybe half of that gets selected as part of maybe what this committee would do, but I, I think there's a need for it. I think there's a need for it for the duration of it. And I think it could help define phases, it could help open up communication, it could help maybe solidify the science that's behind it on how we're making decisions. And I guess I'll pick on Carrie. Maybe I have an idea of what, you know, like the criteria we use or that we're measuring against, but as we talk through it, we're right back to where you started at and that, and that does make sense. And so it's not to put one person's idea out there, but it's to understand kind of how we come to the decisions, what interests that we're looking at. And so that would be my view of it, but before, whether it's myself and the board president and the superintendent sit down to craft it, it cannot, in my mind, go forward without the board's support. And so whether that's a formal motion and a vote with what criteria you need at the end product to have your support if it's brought back to the month, but I think, and I guess I'll end on this, I do think, to what everybody is saying, that we do need to get back as a board sooner than later, because that committee doesn't exist. But I think if we could ramp up that committee in a relatively rapid fashion, it could take some of that away from the board and more distribute it and some of it from the administrative team and make it a more collaborative effort, so.
True. Tom, I guess my, my desire as the board president, if anybody has a desire for a committee, regardless of what the topic, if they stand a strong desire for that, I would hope that we would be courteous enough to that of the board member to just approve that. That said, it would probably behoove us to have a motion and a second on this and we can move forward with that. And the other thing that I love, that the audience might be interested about this sort of lower-level committee work, is that it does allow for more of an opportunity for discourse beforehand or afterward, one more opportunity to meet the faces and hear some of the discussions that are occurring at a lower level and a less tense and voting moment. So if I could have a motion and a second for the creation of a pandemic committee, that would be great.
Joe, for our, would this be considered an ad hoc committee or is this a standing committee? Or is there some other classification for it?
My, my understanding of a, a board special committee is it has to serve, it serves a specific length of time generally to deliver a final report. And when I first mentioned this, my thought is, is that how we would accommodate what our policy is, is that it would serve the length of time that the governor declares a, has declared these emergencies, and when he quits declaring them, then we could deliver a final report, assuming that everything would kind of be over by then. So it would be a special committee, not a standing committee.
So to make a special committee, can we leave the committee makeup to the discretion of the board president, essentially knowing that he would be consulting with the board for that? Or would you like approval of the concept, coming back with the formal makeup for a
Most of our committees are structured to where if a board member feels, I want every administrator on it, or I want this, you specify that in there, and then the board president then always has the right to appoint others as needed, and he can choose to appoint or not appoint. So I'm, I'm comfortable with whatever the board president and the superintendent come up as they think would make a meaningful committee, trying to accomplish what we're accomplishing.
Just trying to think of the scope of the motion.
So.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Did you state a motion yet, or?
The creation of a special committee, a special pandemic committee.
That would serve in the duration?
During the duration of the.
Of the governor's emergency.
Thank you.
So I would make that motion.
I'll second. We have a motion by Kinzer and a second by Hazelhurst. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Kelly. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
No.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, that brings us to executive session. Can I have a motion and a second, please, to adjourn to executive session for the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteer to the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of the public body that is subject to Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with Act 5 ILCS 120-2C1, as well as the purchase or lease of real estate for the use of the public body, including meeting, meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired. Could I have a motion and a second, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Maxi, a second by whom?
Uh, Rudy.
Rudy. Thank you, Mr. Rudy. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mrs. Ladine?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mulholland?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Herberly?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will adjourn to executive session. If we are not to see you afterward, thank you again, folks, for attending.